Good morning and welcome to the Landmarks Preservation Commission's public hearing and public meeting of June 24, 2025. We'll begin this morning by taking attendance. I'll ask our general counsel, Mark Silverman, to call the role.
Chair Carroll.
Here.
Land. Chapin. Ten.
Yeah.
Two. Ginsburg.
Here.
Goldblum. Commissioner Jefferson. Commissioner Lutti.
Here.
Master.
Here.
All right. Good morning and welcome again to the June 24, 2025, public hearing and public meeting. We are going to begin this morning with a public meeting item, which is an application for work at a designated interior that has already had a public hearing and it's back today with some revisions in response to comments at the initial public hearing. And then we will move to our public hearing agenda to review new applications for work on designated properties. And this meeting is being held via Zoom and livestreamed on our YouTube channel for anyone who would like to participate or view the proceedings remotely. And before we get started, I have a very sad, bittersweet announcement to make. Commissioner Lutti is, this is Commissioner Lutti's last day today, serving as a commission. And I want to thank you so much for all of your work and dedication to our mission. Jeannie came to LPC with a long career and experience in real estate, economic revitalization, economic development, and a love of design, and truly embraced our mission and has been a very enthusiastic commissioner. I just want to note a couple of your prior positions, which I think really overlap with our work. And one is that you served as the Vice President of Marketing and Corporate Communications at EDC. And we're at EDC through the Dinkins and Koch administrations, working on major citywide initiatives and development projects, some of which overlapped with historic contexts. And also among your many, many roles in the private sector, you and the public sector, were president of the BAM Cultural Development Corporation, where you spearheaded the planning and development of the BAM Cultural Project. And I know that's something that you're very proud of, and it's something that has, that experience you have has really informed a lot of the applications that we've seen in the neighborhood. And so you've brought a unique lens to our review with your experience in city government, economic development, and your love of design. And I just thank you from my deepest gratitude to you for your support of our mission and, as I said, your enthusiasm for everything that we do. So thank you so much for your service to the city.
I'm going to have to say a few words because I'm so enthusiastic. I just want to say, how long have I been here? I don't think we ever figured.
I know. It's, it might be almost 10 years.
Almost 10 years. And, and I remember when I was first approached about being on the commission, I was thinking, wow, I wonder what that would be like. Should I do it? Then I came in and I spoke to Sarah and I spoke to Monakshi, who was chair at that time, and Mark. And, you know, I, I think, like, from that meeting, I just completely sort of zoned in. And it's been, it's been really an amazing, wonderful, and very fulfilling experience for me. And I have to say, because of my background, which kind of programmed me in a way to really care about so many things that are at the crux of what the Landmarks Commission does, I just am so happy to have been able to make a contribution to, a positive contribution to the landscape of our city, from an architectural and historic and, you know, cultural and actually business standpoint. In every way, it's been a wonderful experience. I, I want to thank, first, my fellow commissioners. It has been an incredible pleasure to work with all of you. I'm sorry Fred's not here, who I felt like he was my partner in crime there. And then I, then I got Stephen and a little bit of Corey. But every single commissioner that I have worked with has been, is and has been amazing. And I have learned so, so much from you. And I think the exchange between us and everyone's commitment has just made this experience even better. I also want to thank, make, have a few other thanks. First, I want to thank, you know, all of the advocate groups that are out there, whether they're preservation groups, community groups, the community boards, you know, they are committed and they show up here, whether we agree with everything they say or not, they show up and they pay attention and they give us their best efforts and their, their best perspectives on everything we're working on. And that helps to inform us and only makes us better at what we do. And also, I want to say that I want to thank some of our applicants because many of them come here with the goal of presenting projects that are going to fit within the neighborhoods that they live in, if they're historic and if, if it's a historic building that helped to preserve the entity. And if it's a complex, one that has a major impact on the, the neighborhood around it, to make sure that the integrity of that complex or that building is not lost. And that, that it, you know, build these institutions and buildings and complexes continue to be preserved and have an impact on, on, on the city's landscape. Last but not least, I really want to spend a few minutes talking about this, about the agency. Having worked in city government for 10 years and having worked with it, when I ran the BAM Cultural District Project, and also being on the Boards of Arts Institutions and interfacing with city agencies on their group's behalf, I'm very familiar with how city agencies and city entities work. LPC is one of the best-run agencies I have ever come in contact with. I think the, the people who work here are smart, super smart, incredibly dedicated to what they do, to our mission. And they work to help applicants achieve their goals. And I, I really think that people on the outside are very afraid of this agency. And, and I think LPC has done a lot to streamline not only how we work and manage our projects, but, but how we take in projects and then how we work with groups that are going to come through our, our process. And I, I am never disappointed when I need information, when I, when I look at, at the, the work that comes before us. I, I just think this is a, a really incredible, you are a group of unsung heroes, essentially. So I would like to sing your praises right now and tell you, I'm going to miss every single one of you, especially the people I see on a weekly basis. But please go back and tell people in the staff that they're great and, and that I thank them for all that they've done. I just want to single out a couple of people. I've also watched people grow while I've been here. And I want to say, Corey, you are doing an amazing job in your position as Director of Preservation. And you have a lot of deputies. And they're all great. So I just want to, you know, quickly say thank you to all of them. Carolyn, Jared, Bernadette, Emma, Edith, even Bill. You're all, you're all making this place wrong. And, you know, people don't realize it. They just see bodies moving in and out at the meetings. But the, you're the people who, who really make it happen. Of, damn it, thank you. You are really, you know, a bedrock here, a total unsung hero here. And Stephen, you have also completely grown and evolved in a way that's really benefited us tremendously. Mark. What can I say? I love you. It was great sitting next to you. Always helping me sort of to look at things in certain ways. Please thank John for everything he did. I'm definitely going to miss you. And what can I say, Sarah? You're the best. It's been, you know, I came in under Monakshi and she was really a strong leader and really did so many things to help this organization. You are equally strong. And in some ways, you know, you are so soft and easygoing, but you really focus this commission, us and the staff, in a way that helps us to do our best. And it's been wonderful getting to know you personally and professionally. And I will absolutely miss you. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
And I will miss having you here at the table, but I will be, you know, continue, you will be part of my life and we'll continue to see each other in other ways. But we are really going to miss you at the table and your unique voice. So thank you for everything you've done for us.
Thank you.
Now, now we move on to business. We're going to move to our public meeting agenda. So we'll turn it over to Corey to take us through the items.
All right. Thank you, Sarah, and good morning, everyone. Start today's Preservation Department Agenda with Public Meeting Item Number One, LPC 24-0950. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, Block 170, Lot 7501, 346 Broadway, AKA 108 Leonard Street and 50 Lafayette Street, the former New York Life Insurance Company Building Individual and Interior Landmark. This is a Neo-Italian Renaissance style monumental skyscraper with Neo-Italian Renaissance style interiors designed by Stephen D. Hatch and McKenna Meaden White and built in 1894 to 98. The application is to legalize alterations to the designated interior lobby space and noncompliance with LPC permits. This was last presented at the public hearing June 4, 2024. No action was taken at that time. Applicants will present revisions to the proposal after we open the proceedings.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Goldblum, would you make a motion to open the proceedings?
I'll move.
Thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, you may begin.
Good morning, Commissioners. Erin Ruley, Higgins, Quaysbarth &amp; Partners. I'm joined today by my colleague Jonathan Taylor. And on Zoom, we have Christine Heller of Focus Lighting, who are the lighting designers for the project. As Corey mentioned, we haven't seen you for a year on this matter. So I'm going to start with a brief overview of where we were a year ago, and then take us through the proposal today. And so, again, this is 346 Broadway, individual landmark, as well as interior designated spaces, occupies the full block between Lafayette and Broadway, Catherine and Leonard Streets. And when we spoke with you last year, it was to legalize four specific elements in the lobby space. Let's see, where do we go? But just to give you a little bit of context, the, the project, this project started around 2014, when the commission approved a comprehensive rehabilitation and adaptive reuse of, of the building. And prior to that, it had been city-owned and occupied. Conditions looked as such. And, and the commission approved a really extraordinary project. It's an extraordinary landmark. As you can see on the right, the, all the highlighted areas are the interior designated spaces. So it's really very different than other landmark, landmark interiors, because it goes up through the building. And so that project included a full restoration of the envelope, rooftop additions, conversion of the interior for 152 units, and then amenity spaces and commercial spaces as part of that. On the left, we see two of the completed restored spaces, the Presidential Anteroom, which was actually uninstalled and reconstructed in another space in the building. So this is the, the reinstalled space elsewhere. And then, of course, the, the banking hall, which you approved last year for conversion to the Jack Sheenman Gallery, which is open. And everybody, if you haven't been, should stop by. It looks fantastic. And so it really is an extraordinary adaptive reuse project. And this is in the context of that proposal. So the lobby specifically, here's the restored lobby. It is a two-story space, mezzanine above. The entirety of the space is designated mezzanine and ground floor. It has marble stairs that lead up to the mezzanine. And on the right, you can see kind of the full breadth and depth of the, of the space itself. So the elements that were before you for the legalization were the bronze wall ornaments, the floor finish, and then the reception desk and this illuminated cabinet that extends behind the, the reception desk. At that time, you were comfortable and willing to approve the, the wall motifs, the flooring and the desk, and asked us to investigate further the potential lighting and alterations to the cabinet itself. Just as a reminder of what the conditions looked like prior to the project, we had nonhistoric terrazzo floors, the elevator bays had been clad over, removed, and all contemporary finishes. And all of the, the marble had been painted, can see partitions that were installed. And, and so there was a really extensive restoration and recreation of that historic space that we see in those completed photographs. So of those elements that we just described, you were comfortable with the, the desk, the flooring, and the, the ornaments. And we started to look at the cabinet. Now, the cabinet is a cast glass installation. It has a sort of faceted panel system that extends around. It's internally illuminated and it, and it has cabinets behind it. It acts as storage for all of the packages in the building, for all of the, the owners, and also acts as a kind of support space, maintenance closets, because there's no enclosed space within the, the historic footprint of the lobby itself. So maintenance uses that space. So it serves really practical needs. At the hearing, we discussed the potential for altering this cabinet. It is, since it is cast glass, the glass cannot be cut, and it would require replacement of the, of the entire unit. This was a significant investment on the part of the developer and serves a really practical need in the space. Beyond that, while this is technically a legalization, just as a reminder, the, this is not an instance where an applicant has disregarded the process. The applicant worked with staff, in consultation with staff, for a lobby design following the initial approval, and filed the drawings and included all of this in their drawings. They were operating under the belief that it was approved. There are technical issues. So a hugely complicated project. There are thousand-plus sheets of approved drawings. There have been multiple staff people. The two original staff people are no longer here. And Leanne Pollock has mastered this project in a way that I can't even fathom how she possibly can do it. But it was, it was hugely complicated. There are 15 permits and dozens of material samples. So it was more of a miscommunication, I believe, in the permitting process than it was an actual intent to do something without commission approval. And so from that perspective, they, the applicants, the developers commissioned this piece. And it is a significant piece, as those of you who have been in this space have, have seen. So with that in mind, we worked with staff for the past year to develop a program of lighting that might help reduce the, the, the effect of the, the lit panels and help it recede a bit in the space. And then also install some architectural lighting that might create a more continuous reading of the apps within, within the landmark space itself to draw the eye around. And we installed that mock-up and provided dimmers for the, for the cabinet itself. And some of you have been, commissioners were invited to visit the site and, and see the effect of that lighting scheme. And some of you were able to make it and I think can give firsthand perspective on, on the effect of that lighting. But we'll walk through the proposal now. So here is the existing condition. On the left is the, the recreated elevator grills. We have transoms with the, the gates below. The only lighting in this back section of the, of the apps is our, our recessed fixtures within the historic rosettes in each of the coffers. So that is the only existing lighting at the, at the rear of the space. This is the backside of the cabinet itself, where these are all doors that open to provide the storage I described. And then the frontal view from, from the entryway as you approach the reception desk, this is the, the cabinet we described. This is the existing lighting within the cabinet. And you can see the, the shadow of the, of the apps beyond that. Just to orient you, the, the entire space is designated. And so this is all publicly accessible space. There's, the circulation moves through the space, but within those historic elevator bays, that, those are now doors to amenity spaces. So through those doors, we get to the mailroom, to the stairs, down to the gym, there's the bathroom. And so those are used throughout the day by the tenants and other members of the public. And the, the cabinet follows the radius of the, both the ceiling arch and the pattern in the floor, and provides a sort of a screening effect for all of the kind of ins and outs of that, those amenity spaces. So the mock-up, the mock-up had, has sort of three approaches. One, to dim the lighting in the cabinet. This has the effect of reducing the, just the overall brightness of it and the, the attention that it draws to the eye when you walk into the space. It reduces the reflections within the, with the polished floors. And it allows you to read the texture of the, the cast glass better as well. So it actually enhances the reading of the, of the cabinet. Behind the cabinet, it has, there are two different installations. One is a globe pendant. The globe follows the pattern of other glass globes within the, the historic space. And it, it has a four-inch drop and a bronze canopy at the historic rosette. And so we looked at varying lengths of, of the drop for the pendant. As you get it closer to the coffer, it creates a harsh shadow on the, on the ceiling. And if we drop it any lower, it started to create too much of a presence within that, within that space. So we landed with staff on this, this four-inch location. And so that, that provides uplighting to the coffers themselves to define the ceiling plane. And then beyond that, at the spandrel, for the elevator gates, we have the, an uplight at the transom that has a, a baffle that has been, it's break metal that's been formed to match the underlying molding. And so that extends across, conceals a linear fixture that uplights the transom. And then similarly, a downlight on the gates themselves and with the baffle across that. So this is installed in one bay, but there are nine, and it would be continuous throughout those nine bays. In the view on the left, you can see that we've installed it in the third bay to give a sense, because we wanted to sort of approach the darkest spot within the, the, within the apps. But it would also start and catch your eye at this first rosette and then continue that pattern all the way around. A few details of the installation. This is the, the globe mocked up. And then the details of the, the baffle and the uplight and downlight at the grills. We also looked at a, a third location to have a linear fixture at the bottom of the gates. And that seemed to diminish the intended effect. So we, with staff, decided that that wasn't an effective way of addressing the condition. Existing and proposed, so on the left, this is, and apologies, it's very hard to capture lighting in photographs. It wants to, it focuses on a different thing every time. So the, on the left is the undimmed cabinet. You can see the reflections on the, on the polished floor and how dark it is around the, the apps itself. And the dots of like, sort of the pin lights within the rosettes. These historically would have had exposed bulbs just at the base of the rosette. And then in the, with the mock-up in place, so we can see the, the uplight in this corner, the uplight of the pendant, making the, the coffer more legible. Also, it, it, it creates a termination. You get the sort of legibility of the top of the cabinet and the glowing plane of the ceiling above that. And then also the sort of lovely washing effect on the, on the grills themselves. This is the, the current condition at the, at the desk. So you can see the, the effect of the, the wash on the, the transom and the gates below. And then an overall view with the mock-up in place, understanding sort of how this all works together, the ground floor, the mezzanine, and how you read the curves within the space and the proposed highlight that will happen around the, the apps and giving that break to the cabinet. And then similarly, as you're ascending the, to the mezzanine level, you can see the drop of the pendant and how it picks up on the rhythm of the other glass globes within the space. There's also a very large chandelier overhead that has that same globe fixture. So all very consistent. And then finally, this is just overall view to give you a sense of that portion of the mock-up and the overall condition. And we think that that it, ultimately, this is a piece of furniture. I know there's been a lot of conversation about the, the effect within the space. But it, it really wasn't something done without thought and approach to the design that was considered and, and consulted with staff. And so they, the, altering the cabinet itself is not a viable option really for, for the developer nor the condo board that will inherit this element. And they, the, in terms of the effect of the lighting, if it's a permanent solution that enhances the lobby, as, as opposed to a piece of furniture. So the, the lighting installation will be there and would have this effect going forward, really enhancing the space and, and maybe should have been considered from, from the outset, because it really does highlight all of the work and to recreate those grills that had been lost to time. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions? Yes, Commissioner Ginsburg.
So, two quick ones. One is, I presume everything will be on dimmers so it can get balanced. One is, I presume everything will be on dimmers so it can get balanced?
Yes.
And two, I'm presuming you just have the lighting at the mock-up. And on the left side where the door is open, there will be that lighting too?
Yes, so all nine locations will have that same lighting.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Okay. There are no other questions, and I think we'll move to our discussion. And, you know, I will note that we did receive additional letters from Victorian Society of New York and Historic District Council, which were shared with the commissioners in advance of today. And this is a project, this was a very large project, as the applicant said. There were, it's a full block individual landmark and a interior landmark with a lot of rooms that are on upper floors as well as the lobby and all the way through the building. So this was an adaptive reuse for residential use. It had previously been owned by the city. And I think you saw some images today showing the condition before this work was undertaken. And so when we last saw this application a year ago, it included legalization of some changes that had occurred over the course of the project. And that included the desk, the floor pattern, removing some ornament from the wall, and this wall behind the desk. And at that public hearing, I think that the commission was in support of three of those four components, the desk, the floor, and the removal of the ornament from the wall. But we did ask if there was some way that the applicant could explore enhancing the visibility of the new and recreated doors behind the cabinet. And, you know, just as a reminder, there was an image that showed what those doors look like before, they were sheet rock and solid white doors. So this is all new fabric that has been recreated. And so the applicants, I think, explored opportunities to light that to allow for your eye to see through the ceiling and around it to see the recreated grills and doors. And these are also activated spaces, so they anticipate people going behind. And I know several of you made a site visit to look at the mock-up of the lighting. And so we'll have a discussion now. Commissioner Lutfi, would you like to take this one?
Sarah, as you said, overall, this project is a wonderful project. It took a building that was just sitting there for quite some time. And the developer did a very, very good job in their adaptive reuse of the building for residential space. I think overall, the lobby is beautiful. When you walk in, you get a sense of its grandeur. I think most of the work is, has been very elegant, and I appreciate everything. The grill work, I just want to start there, is extraordinary. It's funny, because I've been in the building a lot, and I've spent a lot of time looking at the grill work. And I always felt that it didn't, you couldn't really see it. And so I love the solution for lighting it and showing it off both above and below. And you really get to see the detail. And you really get more of an understanding of how the space functions now and how it did function, and it's very, very elegant. So I think that's terrific. I can't say I was the biggest fan of the desk, but that's approved. So the cabinet, I, you know, it's too bad that there was some miscommunication about it because I think I might have made some recommendations to have it really speak even a little more, even from a modernity standpoint, to what is the rest of the work that the developer did. That said, I think it's well done. And I think it does an effective, I think the glass, the curve is beautiful. It kind of completes that circle that the desk starts and that is behind it with the doors. And it just plays very well with the space around it. The glass is, you know, layered in such a way that it's very elegant. You can't really tell from this photo what it looks like. And I think the lighting is understated. Happen to think the back of it is very nice. And that black color in the back is, works well with the lines in the floor. The globe fixtures are also a great addition, both contributing to lighting, the grill work, and also speaking to some of the other globe fixtures that are in the space. And what else do I have to talk about?
I think that's it.
Yeah, so I can approve this.
All right, Commissioner Master?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Lutfi. This was one of the first, it might have been the first field trip that I did as a commissioner. And I remember walking in and thinking that this lobby was breathtakingly beautiful. The applicant did a tremendous, tremendous job. And even in recreating the grills and the elevator. I think that there's, I do believe that this cabinet is furniture. And I think that dimming the lights, I think is effective. And then adding the globe lights behind to highlight the grill work, I think that that works, and I can find this appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Goldbaum?
Thanks. I think that the others look very nice and provide a nice uplight. But for me, what they do is they highlight the problem with the closet in the first place. Closet's too high. The closet blocks the most, kind of, it blocks the payoff of the axis of the entry that was intended by the original architect, which is the apps, a very decorative grill work. And I think it's, I think that had it come before us, I certainly would not have voted for it to be higher than the trees above the elevator doors. I think it has to come down. Only mitigating factor for me is the fact that it appears to have been perhaps approved by staff. And if that's the case, then it should be approved by staff and, you know, not by us. The fact that it's here means that, I guess, that we are being asked to render an opinion on that topic. And my opinion is that it's too high.
Yeah, and I think, I think it wasn't exactly approved by staff. It was, yeah.
No, I think that there was no, there's no drawing that is perforated that shows that this was approved by staff, these changes. There were some drawings that showed pieces of furniture on them that weren't necessarily, they were never approved by staff, you know. And but I think that the, and there's, but there was, as what Chima Kallit said, this is something that we don't, this is, this drawing is something that we could never find in their plans and that, but there's a huge amount of confusion. I mean, I have to say, I agree completely with the applicant that this was a very complicated, very voluminous plans, lots of staff changes. And there was certainly miscommunication about what was approved or what wasn't approved.
Well, so what I guess my response to that is that I think that we should be generous as we can be in terms of, my view, allowing them the time to make any changes that if others agree, the commission indicates they should make. But I really think that it's, practically speaking, if it is attached to the floor or not, ain't nobody moving this nowhere. It's not like a chair that you can go put in the living room, family room. This is here. It's wired in, it's permanent, and...
All right, thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg?
Well, having visited the site yesterday, I think the lighting is a real improvement. And I think also the dimming of the cabinet does help, although I do, I'm torn because I do think it would be good if the cabinet were somewhat lower. But I also understand that it wasn't that, from what we can understand, that the applicant intentionally misled people, and it's a history that is murky. So I could approve this.
Right, Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, similarly, I also visited the site. And given the long history, this is a project going back over a decade now. And the, you know, it's a gorgeous lobby. And it's much improved over the prior conditions. Obviously, the elevator banks were nondescript and it was not. And I think that the issue that the commission identified were correct in that, you know, the cabinet need to have a separation from the ceiling, the coffer. And I think that the, and also the fact that they duplicated some form of a grill to the elevator banks is an enhancement. As I indicated at the site yesterday, I thought that the only minor detail in that regard in terms of the lighting is the buffer, the baffle track. It was, the mock-up has a little bit short of the end, and I think it should run full length because the sharp edges were exposed at the end run. So you can see the thing, and I think if you can do that on that end, I was so sure that is the final product will be a full run. And I think that lighting of both the grill work and the uplighting and the enhancement of the chamber does create that separation. So I reluctantly agree because I do agree with some of the comments about that. If the cabinet were come before us today, I would have preferred it to be much lower.
Okay, all right. So thank you all for your comments. I think we are not in a position where we have six votes today to approve this. You do have some support around the table for the proposed mitigation and the lighting to draw one's eye around the cabinet. But we don't have enough to support the cabinet. So we'll take no action, and we will let you continue to think about next steps working with the staff. All right, thank you. All right, we'll move to our public hearing agenda now.
All right, we'll start with public hearing item number one, LPC 25-09786, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Staten Island, Block 15, Lot 138, 106 Carroll Place in the St. George New Brighton Historic District. This is a neo-colonial-style garage dwelling designed by Charles A. Dunker and built in 1941. The application is to legalize alterations to the facade and installation of HVAC equipment without LPC permits.
Morning Commissioners, Richard Hyde Preservation Staff. I will be presenting, and the owners, Kristi Smith and Mark Long are here to answer.
Plugging and unplugging cords just to make sure that everybody's microphone is...
Hello, 123.
Yes, we can hear you, thank you.
Okay, so subject property, 106 Carroll Place. You can see there on the south side of Carroll Place. Just to note that these are a bunch of accessory structures at a much lower grade associated with the main residences on St. Mark's Place. It's about a 30-foot change in grade from the two streets. And then the current picture of the house. And then just to show the relationship of these accessory structures on Carroll Place in relation to the main houses. And there has been some subsequent subdivisions that have created separate lots for these accessory structures. Just a quick site plan aerial, just showing the areas for the scope of work, which is to legalize the installation of a wall-mounted HVAC split system and to legalize cladding the base of the building. This is just to show the original main house, 93 St. Mark's Place that this was associated with. These houses are all built in the 1870s, 1880s, 1890s. And about 50 or so years later, the garages were all built along Carroll. So here we see the designation photograph of the subject property. You can see that this is sort of built partly into the hillside, which has caused some issues that a lot of the ground floor is sort of against, into the hillside, which has caused sort of water issue, water damage and infiltration. So you can see stucco clad base with aluminum siding at the top floor. And to address some water issues and repair, there was a quartzite cladding installed at the ground floor and a wall-mounted system, HVAC system there. Just to give you some details of the stone plating, stone panel cladding details, it's sort of quartzite, so it's a metamorphic rock, it's fairly durable, it's exterior grade. It's got a neutral finish in color. And as you can see, there are numbers that are fieldstone retaining walls in the street scape that relate, well, to the materiality of the cladding. Just to give you a sense of the other accessory structure garages, the subject property, because of the spaces and the lots and the backyards of the buildings on St. Mark's Place, is really only visible in relation to the immediate two adjacent garages here. But just to give you a sense of the variety of the accessory garages Okay, and in comparison to the main residences on St. Mark's Place. The HVAC split system wall-mounted unit is sort of constrained where its location, the only pathway up to the main entrance into the house is up that sort of side stairwell, so it has to be raised above head clearance height. It's also the, the sort of electricity supplies in the garage there, and it's serving the rooms at the front of the house. So there's possibility of putting it at the far end in the rear yard, however, that means more conduit, less efficient system, because it's further away from the rooms that it serves, and also electricity supply. Visibility, there's about a 15-foot visibility corridor along the sidewalk where it is visible, as you said, then beyond that sort of cone, it starts to get blocked by some of the other structures in the neighboring property. And they have also painted the conduit and leaded so that it sort of blends in better with the light-colored aluminum siding. Okay, and that's about the 15-foot corridor there. So if there's any questions, the owners here, they can answer any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Do we have any questions? Yes, Commissioner Ginsburg.
So, this was obviously done without review. Is there any explanation of why it wasn't reviewed with the staff before the work was done?
I'm Kristi Smith. We were not aware of the extent of, yeah, what required approval. We knew we couldn't, we knew we couldn't build any extensions or raise the roof or change the structure in any way. We had this done, the cladding done five years ago, and the air conditioner done 11 years ago, and I, it didn't occur to us that that would be something that we would need to have approval for. The bottom part of the garage there was like a cement stucco. It, it, to us, of course, we're laymen, we don't know anything about architecture, but it did, it did look unfinished, and we were, I think, we were just trying to make our house look more like a dwelling and help improve our quality of life, help fix the issues that we were having with the stucco, with the water damage on the sides, and, yeah, that's...
I have two more.
But now we absolutely know, as soon as we got the letters, we were, you know, we were shocked, and we were, you know, very sorry that we had done this.
Was this work filed with the Building Department?
No.
I'm sorry, my name is Mark Long. We've just been cleaning our house. We hadn't, never meant to be any, homeowner living in a garage trying to keep our family clean.
I think the work should have been filed with the Building Department, so just asking, would it be possible to put stucco over that existing finish, the stone finish, that, have you looked into that?
Well, no, we haven't looked into it because we didn't know we needed to look into that. Again, no one's, we haven't had this discussion.
Okay, thank you.
But it is, it is non-permanent, I mean, it can...
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, let's see if, we're going to see if we have any public testimony, and we'll come back to you. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak on this item? All right, noting that there isn't, I will turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote participants.
Did we get anything else to say?
Yes, why don't you have a seat? You can sit in the bench or on the chairs, that's okay. We're going to take testimony, and then we're going to come back to you, and you'll get to speak again.
Those joining us via Zoom who would like to offer testimony, please use the raise hand function. Seeing none, I will note for the record that Staten Island Community Board One recommends approval.
All right, so you have support from the community board. Is there any final statement you'd like to make before we do move into our discussion? Okay, please come up.
Hello, my name is Mark Long, husband of Kristine Smith. So what we, she had mentioned briefly about quality of life is true. We have an eight-year-old daughter, there's our block, if you can, if you've seen the photos of the house, page of how everything goes, we are the rear yards of all those big homes above us that are majority in our immediate area unkept and overgrowth, and the street is very abandoned in the summers and the weekends, and in the evenings mostly, and we have a lot of activity on our block because it's off a main road, and including in front of my house with my daughter. As retired firefighter lieutenant with the fire department, I seek safety of my family more than anything, I'm sorry again. So what, to keep this short, when we did this work five years ago, the illegal activity that was immediately under my daughter's window, and immediately, because now it looks like a house and not a vacant garage, like everything else on that block was surrounding us, has stepped aside, has moved away from our home, and to tell me to put that back for my daughter's safety is going to make me cry right now. This, I'm raising a child here, and I've got to go back to that. Used condoms, drugs, everything in my driveway, it's not fair. Thank you, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you, thank you. All right, Commissioners, any final questions? All right, let's move to our discussion. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, so the hearing is closed, and we'll begin our discussion now, and this is a street, as the applicant and as Richard has described, that is a street where there are garages and utilitarian buildings related to the mansions, or historically related to the mansions above, and there is a big topographical change. So this is a street where this building is really seen in the context of these other utilitarian and garage structures that feature a variety of modern materials, and this building itself has aluminum siding on the upper floors. So the applicants are seeking approval for legalization of the installation of this stone over the stucco and for this mini-split system, which, just by the way that they're installed, they do have to be located near the rooms that they're serving and provide, and there is conduit, and we routinely approve those on rear facades, but here, because of the way this is oriented, it's on the side, they are proposing to paint out the conduit covers and have shown that from the street, this is a limited-view corridor and partially obscured by the bushes. Commissioner Master, would you like to take this one? You're familiar with this.
I would be happy to. Yeah, living on Staten Island, I do know this street, and I know this area, and the applicant is 100% correct. This is walking distance from the ferry, and it can be a tough neighborhood. I find that the improvements that they made in the stone veneer do make it look a lot nicer, it does make it look more residential, so that you wouldn't have, I can see how you wouldn't have that type of criminal activity. I also know that the series of structures kind of next to this building, they're all garages, and some of the garages do look abandoned. There is mixed material in a lot of the garages, so there's not, it's not like there's any consistency. So I can find that the stone veneer is appropriate, and it also references, I think, the stone wall that's nearby. I also think that the HVAC unit adjoining to the wall, I don't find that obtrusive. I think from the other view that we saw, it's shielded a lot by some of the shrubbery and greenery, and I think it blends in pretty well. So this is appropriate, and I actually think it's kind of the nicest, they've turned this, the applicant has turned this into kind of one of the nicer structures along the street.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Jefferson.
I agree. I think the texture of the stone really enhances with the aluminum siding, and the wall that's existing becomes really a very interesting composition. I think they made it better than what was there. The HVAC unit, you know, the craftsmanship of that could have been better, but all in all, this is accidentally became a kind of a really wonderful little building.
Commissioner Goldblum.
I agree that the modifications to the structure are appropriate. I do think, though, that the AC unit either to the other side of the pathway or to the back, or, you know, I know these units do have a limited distance, but it's not, it's not tiny, it's, it's, I believe that given how small the structure is, the unit could be moved without compromising its performance in such a way that it's not visible. And that's just the standard that we've used in other cases, so I don't think that would be a particularly onerous thing. I think that they should also work with the staff to coordinate how the conduit is run so that it's paired with a leader, and visibility of that is also minimized.
So, I don't know, if you stay on this wall, I think the visibility kind of remains the same, it's sort of the same 15-foot gap in the shrubs.
Right, yeah, I'm saying you could put it around the corner or put it on the other side of the walkway where it would be in the bushes.
Okay.
That would be, you know, a distance of another five feet or something.
I don't know if that would be work technically, but we can look into that. Commissioner Ginsburg.
So, let me just, if, first of all, I understand that this was an error out of lack of knowledge, not, not something you knew you were doing that was wrong, and I appreciate that, and that does make a difference in my perspective. I think if you'd come in, I might have suggested the picture of the stone wall with the house is the most convincing of why it is, but I might have looked at a larger stone on your house, but I think that's acceptable. I would disagree with Commissioner Goldblum on the HVAC unit, because I was looking at this and thinking about this. First of all, a longer run will have more leaks, and all the coolants are a really bad greenhouse gas that makes carbon seem minor, so that's one negative, and I thought about trying to move it outside of the stair, but that is probably too close to the property line by code, because typically you need to be five to 10 feet from a property line, so I think it's not ideal, but I can accept that.
Commissioner Chen.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, following the leads of the, different to the other Commissioners as well, as the Commissioner Ginsburg just stated, it's not ideal, but given the circumstances, I can find that appropriate.
Okay, Commissioner Lutfi.
Okay, first of all, to the applicant, as a retired firefighter, thank you for your service to the city and your community. Yeah, I think we would probably have made some, some recommendations about either other stones or size of the stones that were used, and, look, if there's anything else you need to do, please make sure that you come to us. The staff is great and helpful and can help make it easier. I'm going to just start with the HVAC system. I, I think, or, I already said the stone was okay, but the, with the HVAC, I really think the, the visibility is somewhat minimal, and for the, also for the reasons that Mark mentioned, I wouldn't move it, I would just leave it where it is. You know, the only thing that I thought was that maybe you might want to consider painting the garage doors so that they blend a little better with the surrounding stone, the garage doors, not the stone. And so I would actually, I think because then, instead of, I keep looking at like the yellow, which I understand what you were doing, you were just trying to match it to the top, but just by doing the stonework, you've created two different sections here. So I would just like to recommend that you maybe consult with staff about the possibility of painting the garage doors so that this whole bottom section reads as a more harmonious unit.
Okay, all right, so I think we have enough to vote to approve it today, and we can ask them to explore the paint colors with the staff.
In the matter of LPC-25-09786, 106 Carroll Place, St. George New Brighton Historic District, a neo-colonial-style garage dwelling designed by Charles Dunker and built in 1941. Application is to legalize alterations to the facade and installation of HVAC equipment without Landmarks Preservation Commission permits. I note that the building is a simple functional structure whose style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the St. George New Brighton Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the work did not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features, that the cladding assembly is reversible and does not preclude future restoration of the stucco cladding at the base of the building, that the light gray quartzite cladding is compatible with existing finishes found on the building, and harmonious with the materials found along the streetscape, which include stone walls and other utilitarian garage clad with a variety of materials, that the wall-mounted HVAC unit is only visible from limited vantage points from a public thoroughfare, that the position of the HVAC unit is constrained by its proximity to the electric source and the rooms that it serves, as well as required clearances above a pathway, that the light finish of the conduit covers helps them blend in with adjacent siding, and that the applicant will explore with staff, potentially looking at paint colors for the garage, and that the proposed work does not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the building or the historic district.
Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
So second.
All, sorry, Mark, we call the vote.
Sir Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Welling. Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Ginsburg.
Aye.
Goldblum.
Aye.
Jefferson.
Aye.
Lutfi. Master.
Aye.
Seven in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
All right, so that's approved, and please, in the future, anytime you are thinking about making changes, even if they seem minor, it's always worth the phone call to confirm whether you need a permit or not. All right, thank you very much. We'll move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number two, LPC 25-10636, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, block 194, lot 47, 119 Bergen Street in the Borum Hill Historic District Extension, an Italianate-style rowhouse built in 1868. Application is to construct a rear yard addition.
Hello, I'm Alexandra Barker, Barker Architecture Office, and I'm joined today by Annie Paz, project manager for this project, and the homeowner, Allison Beer. So thank you for letting us present today. Today, we're seeking a certificate of appropriateness for a proposed two-story-plus cellar rear addition at 119 Bergen Street in the Borum Hill Historic District Extension. 119 Bergen Street is an Italianate-style rowhouse built in 1868. The existing building is a single-family home configured as a three-story-plus basement and cellar. The proposed addition is to be located at the cellar, basement, and first-floor levels with an open deck at the first floor and stair access to the rear yard. This extension would not be visible from any public thoroughfare. There is also proposed work that has already been approved by the LPC at staff level, including the excavation and lowering of a porch... including the excavation and lowering of a portion of the existing cellar floor to allow for an eight-foot-one ceiling height and a new non-visible HVAC condensing unit with a wood screen at the rear patio. This plan shows the existing buildings and additions on the block, which is surrounded by Bergen, Dean, Smith, and Hoyt Streets. Twenty-nine of the 61 buildings on the block have additions. The proposed addition at 119 Bergen Street is two stories tall with a cellar and projects 14 feet from the existing rear facade. The majority of the existing additions in the block donut are two stories or taller, and many of them project more than the 14 feet that we are currently proposing. The existing rear facades of the buildings on the Bergen Street side step back at a few intervals along the length of the block. The largest step back is 14 feet, and since our proposed addition is also 14 feet, it would not exceed the largest existing projection on the Bergen side of the block. These are photos of the existing conditions of the rear facades at 119 Bergen Street and its immediate neighbors. The neighboring building at 121 Bergen Street has an existing four-story stucco-clad addition, and the other neighboring building at 117 Bergen Street has an existing two-story stucco-clad addition. 119 Bergen Street's existing rear facade is clad in gray stucco at its bottom two stories and gray painted brick at its top two stories. There is an existing deck at the first-floor level and stair to the rear yard with a sunken patio under it for access to the rear yard from the bottom story. This is a proposed floor plan of the basement level. The owners have a growing family and need more bedroom and living space on this level. There will be a small sunken patio with steps for rear yard access under the proposed deck. This patio will have an HVAC condensing unit installed with a wood screen, which will condition the new spaces in the proposed addition. As I said before, that wood-screened condensing unit has already been approved by the LPC at staff level. This is a proposed floor plan of the first-floor level. The family's current dining area shares its space with the kitchen. The owners will need a larger dining space for their expanding family and plan to move it to the extension on this level and also maintain rear yard access from this level of the house. The new proposed deck would project four feet from the rear of the proposed addition, allowing for enough space to open the exterior doors and access the rear yard from the stair. This is an existing building section of 119 Bergen Street. We are proposing to remove an open metal deck and stair at the sunken patio off of the rear of the building. The existing doors in the rear facade of the basement and first-floor levels will be removed and salvaged so they can be reinstalled in the rear facade of the proposed addition. The rear yard will be excavated for the proposed two-story and cellar addition. This building section is also showing the excavation of a portion of the existing cellar level of the house. No underpinning of the neighbors' foundation walls is required for this excavation. The existing cellar height is less than six feet, so this proposed excavation would raise the ceiling height to eight-foot-one to allow comfortable access to the cellar storage space. The cellar excavation under the existing building has already been approved by the LPC at staff level. This is the building section at 119 Bergen Street showing the proposed two-story and cellar addition, which would project 14 feet from the rear facade. There would be a skylight in the new roof of the addition, which would not project higher than the proposed parapet height. The proposed rear deck at the first floor would project four feet from the rear addition, which is smaller than the existing deck that would be removed. The cellar level under the proposed two-story addition would match the level of the proposed lowered slab level in the cellar space of the existing building. This drawing also shows the location of the proposed wood-screened HVAC condensing unit in the rear patio under the deck, which would be clad to match the existing cedar fence around the rear yard. These are existing rear elevations of 119 Bergen Street and its immediate neighbors. The existing rear facade of 121 Bergen Street and its four-story addition are clad in stucco. The existing rear facade of 117 Bergen Street is clad in painted brick, while its two-story addition is clad in stucco. 119 Bergen Street's existing rear facade is clad in stucco at its bottom two stories and painted brick at its top two stories. This elevation also shows the existing rear doors at the bottom two stories that would be removed and reinstalled in the rear facade of the proposed addition. This is a proposed elevation of the rear facade of 119 Bergen and its immediate neighbors. The cladding of the proposed two-story addition would match the rear facade finish of the neighboring buildings of these stories. The top two floors painted brick finish will remain unchanged. The height of this addition would match the height of the neighboring addition at 117 Bergen Street. The coping at the top of the wall of the proposed addition would also match the finish of the metal coping at the existing addition at 117 Bergen Street. We thought that stucco would be the most appropriate choice for cladding this proposed addition since it matches the existing finish of the bottom floor of the rear facade at 119 Bergen Street, and it also matches the context of the site, given that the neighboring additions at 121 and 117 are clad in stucco as well, as are most of the existing additions within the block donut. The elevation of the proposed rear addition would be nearly identical to the existing rear elevation, with the existing doors reinstalled in the rear facade, the same finish for its cladding, and the same design and finish for the rear deck, stair, and railing. This is a proposed wall section of the rear facade, showing the metal coping at the top of the parapet, the stucco finish on the exterior wall, the reinstalled existing doors and the deck with the patio beneath it. These are existing proposed axonometric views of part of the block along Bergen Street. As you can see, there are several additions and decks off of the rear walls of these buildings, the largest being an existing full-width addition at 105A Bergen Street, which is three stories tall. These are closer existing proposed axonometric views in its immediate context with some of the finishes shown. The finish of the proposed addition will match the stucco finish the neighboring additions and the coping at the top of the existing addition at 117 Bergen Street. The color of the proposed addition would match the existing gray color of the rear facade at 119 Bergen Street. And finally, this is a rendering of the proposed addition at 119 Bergen Street from the rear yard. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions on this application? Okay. Is there anyone in the room who'd like to speak on this item? Noting that there isn't, I will turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote participants.
Anyone joining us via Zoom who wishes to offer testimony, please use the raise hand function. All right, seeing none, I will note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board Two recommends approval.
Okay, all right. So the, the testimony is supportive, the community board supported. Is there any final comment you'd like to make before you move, we move to our discussion? Okay, great, thank you. All right, Commissioner Lutfi, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Master, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so this is a proposal for a two-story rear yard addition. The buildings in the back of, the rear facades of the buildings in the, in this block are a combination of painted masonry and stucco, and other rear additions nearby are clad in stucco. And there are other additions that are comparable in terms of their height and how far they project into the green space. So we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Chen, would you like to start this one?
Yeah, this one is simple and straightforward, very, very nicely done, great presentation. I, I can find this as very appropriate because of the, the context that is presented.
Commissioner Lutfi.
Yeah, I agree. I can approve this.
Commissioner Master.
Appropriate.
Commissioner Jefferson. And everybody agree?
Yep.
Okay. Sorry, Commissioner Chen, would you make the motion?
In the matter, excuse me, in the matter of LPC-25-10636, 119 Bergen Street, Borum Hill Historic District Extension, Historic District Extension, the application is to construct a rear yard addition, noting the building style, scale, materials, and details among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the historic district. I recommend approval, finding that the construction of the rear yard addition would not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features, that the two-story addition would be modest in scale and similar in height and depth to other existing additions within the block, and would not substantially reduce the green space at the center of the block, that the simple massing and fenestration and stucco finish of the rear addition will be in keeping with the scale and character of the secondary facades found at the rowhouses within this block, and that the proposed work will not diminish the special architectural and historic character of the building or the Borum Hill Historic District Extension.
Thank you. Commissioner Lutfi, would you second that motion? Mark, will you now call the vote?
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum. Commissioner Jefferson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi.
Aye.
Commissioner Master.
Aye.
With seven in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
All right, that's approved, thank you. And we'll move to the next public hearing item.
Next item is public hearing item number three, LPC-25-11594, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, block 260, lot 24, 56 Jolloman Street in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. This is a Greek Revival-style house built in 1849, and the application is to modify window openings and install new windows.
Hello, my name is Andrew Kraft, representative of Sudenham Studio, the architecture firm. And the owners wish they could be here today. They're having a baby as we speak, so they cannot be here, obviously. So we are, the, the main bullet points here are we are proposing a replacement of fenestration in all fenestration. These are old, leaky. Here's the, the existing, the existing home with the, the white, white windows in the center here. And what we're proposing is a, a full replacement of the windows in the existing openings, no change to the front facade, no change to the lintels. These are leaky aluminum windows. There is asbestos present in the caulking. It's, it's deteriorating, so it's, it's really for the, for the purpose of having a functional home. So here's some photos of the front condition, and then on the top, photos is some slight visibility from the, your alley, as you can see in the, the key plan. Then here's some close photos of the, the rear facade, which we'll, I'll get to in a second, the elevation, but the, the one item we're proposing outside of the full window replacement is a, a large opening on the parlor floor, very similar to the large opening you just saw. Roof photos for context. And again, some, some views of, you can see on the, the bottom, the bottom photo, about 30 feet back, the, the facade is completely out of view. It's not really until you're fully lined up down the alley that you're going to have any kind of eye shot of what we're proposing on that rear facade opening. And again, on the front here, some of the views of the panning falling apart, it's in need of replacement. And then some of the specs, these are, so we're proposing a, a Anderson Woodright six-over-six black double hung for all the, the window replacements, which is in line with both, both adjacent structures currently, as well as some historical photos of the 40s and 50s that we were able to dig up. So, you know, really bringing it back to the historical character as opposed to these 80s aluminum windows. This is, sorry, this is the, the assemblage of what we're proposing on the back opening, but in the same product line as the, the double hungs. And there's some of the muntin details and how it will sit in the sill. So on the, the existing front elevation to the left and the proposed to the right, again, replacing the windows in kinds, not touching the facade, but really just getting this back to a more beautiful, functional front facade. Then on the rear facade, this is the opening I was discussing where we're proposing a, a new steel header, creating this opening on that, that back parlor floor, about 20 feet away in the backyard, there's, they're, they're staring at a, a four-story building, so we're really just trying to get them as much access to light as possible on that parlor floor. Then here's a few key sections, the existing to the left and the proposed to the right, again, showing that double hung, and then proposing a wood-brick mold surround as opposed to the aluminum, kind of staying in line with both the wood makeup of the double-hung window and the historical nature of the, the building. Then on the top, the, the plant section at the jam. Then finally, it's a little, little tight to read here, but that, this is the opening on the back that we're proposing, showing that galvanized steel header supporting the, the brick facade, and then the, the assemblage of the, the Anderson product to match the, the double hung. That's all I have for you.
Thank you very much. Do we have questions on this one? So it's the, the replacement of the modern windows with a new window in the historic configuration, but in a fire bricks material with a wood-brick mold around it, and modifying the openings on the rear facade. Yes, Commissioner Goldblum.
So can you go to the rear elevation for a sec? I would just wanted to ask about why, why you chose, since you are replacing all the rear windows with the six-over-six, how you came to the decision about the design of the rear larger window in terms of the casement design, the transoms, et cetera? How'd you come up with that as opposed to something else?
Yeah, it, I mean, it largely has to do with the, the interior layout. So you'll see as we, after the door, we step up to a, a higher window that, that's driven by some kitchen cabinetry that we would like to build along that, that rear facade. So really setting that as our, our datum of starting a window. And then after that, we were really just aiming to maximize as much natural light, having that, that southern exposure on the back of the house, trying to maximize that opening and carrying as much light throughout the, the long, you know, rectangular floor plan.
Header over the existing windows at the back is what? Top of the, of the back, back windows?
Yes, I believe so. I love that photo, actually. Yeah.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Jefferson.
You're using a wood, wood mold. Why not the brick, why not keeping the brick mold for the window jam?
Why not keep it a brick?
The, the original, I was thinking, the existing brick mold you're removing, correct?
We're keeping the brick mold.
You're keeping the brick?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, and so.
We're, we're essentially creating a new covering border in front of the brick mold, but we're keeping, we're retaining the existing.
I see. So you're removing aluminum panning that's over the wood-brick mold?
Right, the panning and the caulk, which has to go. It's, there's water leakage everywhere. Yeah.
Okay.
So help me, what, what would you see? You would see wood or what would you see at the window, at the jam and head? In your detail.
So you'll essentially see a, a two-inch border, oh, two-inch wood border painted to match the, the new window product.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, is there anyone who wants to speak on this item, noting that there isn't? I'll turn it over to Stephen to see if we have any remote participants.
Those joining us via Zoom who wish to offer testimony, please use the raise hand function, after which you will be promoted to panelist. We ask you to unmute yourself, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. Our first speaker will be Judy Stanton. Our first speaker will be Judy Stanton.
Judy Stanton, speaking for the Brooklyn Heights Association. We think this proposal could be improved. The exposed structural steel support at the rear facade is a clunky addition to what is currently a lightly altered traditional Greek Revival design. We note that the application materials for this proposal, posted online with the Public Hearing Agenda, contain a confusing reference to the steel. Its footnote still refers to the storefront window system contained in the earlier proposal that was presented to the Community Board, but that commercial system has since been removed from the plan, so it is unclear to what extent the steel is still necessary for the new window opening now being proposed to use traditional-style windows. The applicant needs to clarify the proposed use of the steel. In any case, a mix of exposed steel with what is not otherwise intended to be a contemporary design still strikes us as an overly industrial look for this ordinary rowhouse renovation. The rear facade is highly visible from Willow Place, as the photo on Slide GH shows. We believe that it would be preferable to revise or cover the support for the new picture windows and door, so the structural elements are less prominent. For the proposed woodwright brand windows, we think a regular aluminum wood clad product would be better than this hybrid Fibrex product. We are concerned that the Fibrex durability is inferior, and after several years of exposure, it will look worse compared to the wood clad or all wood windows on neighboring houses. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, our next speaker will be Christina Conroy.
Good morning Commissioners, I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society, New York. Now founded in 1966, the Victorian Society in America is dedicated to fostering the appreciation and preservation of our 19th and early 20th century heritage. The New York chapter promotes preservation of our historic districts, individual and scenic landmarks, interiors, and civic art. The Victorian Society supports most of the changes the applicant is proposing for 56 Doralamon, six over six double hung sash with black finish are an appropriate choice for a Greek Revival-style rowhouse. The alterations to the rear facade will require the removal of only a small amount of historic masonry, and will be minimally visible when seen from Willow Place. The roof-mounted HVAC units will be installed at the rear of the roof, where they will not be visible from any public way. However, the applicant's proposal to install new black-finished aluminum panning at the windows on the front facade should not be approved. On drawing G009.00, Photograph 05, shows a window at the parlor where the section of the modern white-finished aluminum panning has been removed. The applicant notes that there's existing wood brick mold under the aluminum panning. The note also says that the brick, wood brick mold is to remain, and that new black-finished aluminum panning will be installed over it. Commissioners, this is simply not appropriate. Wood brick mold is perfectly compatible with aluminum sash. It's also possible to obtain extruding aluminum brick mold with complex profiles, which matches the different profiles of wood brick mold used in the 19th century. Either would be an excellent choice, which would bring this facade closer to its original appearance. The use of modern panning on the front facade must be denied, and the applicant required to use historically appropriate brick mold for these windows. Thank you Commissioners.
Thank you, anyone else joining us via Zoom who wishes to speak, please use the raise hand function. Alright, seeing none, I will note for the record that, sorry. Brooklyn Community Board Two recommends approval on the condition that the top of the opening system is aligned with adjacent window, and the materials and style for the opening system are revisited for a more residential look and feel.
May I address those?
Yes, you can address any comments you'd like.
Okay, so to those two points from the neighborhood commission, one was referring to a previous storefront system, which we've since replaced in these drawings to the residential product to match the double hung, and then also on that rear facade is where we raise this parlor floor double hung to align with our new larger opening. And then to the brick mold point, with the help of staff, at the 11th hour, we reworked our details, and in this presentation now have the wood brick mold, so the aluminum panning referred to was in a previous version of the presentation, not this.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so I think you've addressed many of the comments that were raised, okay. Commissioners, any other final questions? Alright, let's begin our discussion, Commissioner Chen, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Lutfi, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we are looking at the front facade, at the installation of new windows with a wood brick mold, but the sashes will be a Fibrex material, so that is our discussion, they are matching the historic configuration, which currently doesn't exist in the aluminum windows that are, that are there now, and on the rear facade, they are combining window openings to create a larger opening with a door to a deck, and there is some oblique visibility through the rear yards that is the reason that we're looking at this, this would, otherwise, if this were not visible from a public way, this would meet the rules for a staff-level approval, so this is, really, we're going to focus on how you experience this from the street, and there is a photo that shows that for you. Alright, Commissioner Ginsburg, would you start this one?
I think with the changes they've made, this is appropriate and can be approved, and I appreciate them, the team listening to the Community Board and staff, because they made modifications that resolve the issues that I had seen.
Alright, Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I agree, and I just asked them to work with the staff about the molding.
Okay, Commissioner Lutfi?
Appropriate.
Alright, Commissioner Master?
Appropriate.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Appropriate.
And Commissioner Goldblum?
I would suggest, though, that they explore extending the steel channel over the new door on the right, it kind of looks a little bit... They are replacing that header anyway to put in a larger window, I just think it would- Or have the masonry lintel continue, they shouldn't butt out like that.
Okay. Alright, so I do think we have enough to approve it as is, but we can ask them to explore extending, having a unified lintel across both openings.
With regards to LPC 25-07132, 135 Amity Street, Cabo Hill Historic District, an altered rowhouse originally built in 1880s, application is to replace windows. I note that the facade of the original building was highly altered, but the building's scale massing-
It's 56 Doralamon.
Sorry, oh, you're right, sorry about that. With regards to LPC 25-11594, 56 Doralamon Street, Brooklyn Heights Historic District, a Greek Revival-style house built in 1849, application is to modify window openings and install new windows. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic district of the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. The proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features, that the proposed composite windows at the primary facade will match the historic windows in terms of operation, configuration, and finish, and the change in material will not be perceptive as viewed from the sidewalk. That the upper portion of the proposed modified openings at the parlor floor of the rear facade will be visible from the public thoroughfare and will be seen in conjunction with existing tall fencing, planting, and therefore will not call undue attention to itself, that the adjacent rear facade features a variety of fenestration patterns modified over time, including the adjacent false facade at number 58 for a subway vent structure, therefore the proposed work will not detract from the unified fenestration pattern across the facade, and the work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the building or the historic district. However, I note that the window lintel on the rear facade on, I think it's the second floor, you should coordinate, because it, right now, is very close to the existing stone lintel, and work with staff to see if you can resolve that issue. And there, but therefore we approve this proposal.
Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
Alright.
Carol?
Aye.
Chen?
Aye.
Ginsburg?
Aye.
Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
Commissioner Mast?
Aye.
Seven in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
Alright, we'll move to the next item.
The next item is Public Hearing Item Number Four, LPC 25-07132. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Brooklyn, Block 291, Lot 43, 135 Amity Street in the Cabo Hill Historic District. This is an altered rowhouse originally built in 1880, the application is to replace windows.
Good morning Commissioners, Timothy Shaw, Preservation Staff, I will be running the presentation. 135 Amity Street is located on the north side of Amity Street, between Clinton and Henry Streets in the Cabo Hill Historic District. You can see here, the building was built in 1880 with a Neo-Grec style, including a multi-story front bay. The, excuse me, this was partially altered here, you can see here, in the early 1960s, these are photos from when the Commission was first reviewing the designation of the Cabo Hill Historic District, but by the time of designation in 1969, pictured here, all of the decorative detail, including the bay, were removed from the building. At that time, the windows were six over six double hung wood with a white finish. Currently, they are six over six double hung wood with a black finish. At some point, that's when, it's not clear when they were painted black, sorry. The application here is to replace the windows with a two-over-two configuration in aluminum. The details, excuse me, there will be a two-inch brick mold with a sort of a beaded edge. And there are other houses on the block, this house was built not as part of a row, there are other houses on the block with two-over-two and other multi-light configurations in here. Helga Furman, the architect, is here, if you have any other questions? About the proposal.
Commissioners, any questions? Okay, is there anyone who'd like to speak on this item? Okay, noting that there isn't, I will turn it over to Stephen to see if we have any remote participants.
Anyone joining us via Zoom who wishes to offer testimony, please use the raise hand function. Seeing none, I'll note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board Six, we approve you of this application.
Okay. Alright, I'd like to ask the applicant if you'd like to come up and say, make any statement before we move to our discussion.
Thank you Commissioners, the application is to replace the existing six-over-six windows with two-over-two windows, because the owners think the six-over-six is too busy for them, and it seems like there are a lot of, quite a few other buildings with a two-over-twos configuration in the near vicinity of the building, so I believe that is appropriate configuration in that neighborhood.
Alright, thank you. Alright Commissioners, if there are no final questions, we'll move to our discussion. Okay, Commissioner Lutfi, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Mast, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so this is a building that, while constructed in 1880, has been heavily altered and stripped of all of its ornament, and the applicant is proposing an aluminum-clad two-over-two double hung window. The designation report doesn't actually speak about this building, and so I think this is here because the two-over-two configuration is not something that is documented, although they did exist in 1880 when this building was originally constructed, and also for the aluminum clad material for a multi-light configuration. So Commissioner Jefferson, would you start this one?
Sure, I mean, this building has been altered many times, no original details retained, and it seems like the two-over-two relate well to its neighbors, so I can approve this.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Goldblum? Commissioner Ginsburg?
Agreed.
Commissioner Chen?
Same here.
Does everybody agree, or, okay, so Commissioner Jefferson, would you make the motion?
In the matter of, in the matter of LPC-25-07132, 135 Amity Street, Cabo Hill Historic District, application is to replace windows. I note, I note that the facade of the original building was highly altered, but the building's scale, massing, and materiality are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and character of the Cabo Hill Historic District. I recommend approval finding that the proposed work would not eliminate any significant architectural features, that the building was highly altered prior to designation, with all original details removed, resulting in a facade with no predominant style, therefore double hung windows of a variety of configurations could be harmonious, could be harmonious with the facade, that the proposed two-over-two configuration will relate well to the historic configuration found at other buildings on this block, that the proposed operation, detail, and finish of the aluminum clad windows are in keeping with historic windows found at buildings throughout the historic district, that the work will not detract from the special architect on the historical character of the building or the Cabo Hill Historic District.
Thank you, Commissioner Mast, would you second that motion?
Second.
Alright, Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Chen?
Aye.
Mr. Ginsburg?
Aye.
Mr. Goldblum? Mr. Jefferson?
Aye.
Mr. Lutfi?
Aye.
Commissioner Mast?
Aye.
With seven in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
Alright, that's approved, thank you, we'll move to the next item.
Next item is Public Hearing Item Number Five, LPC 25-10562. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Brooklyn, Block 1213, Lot 19, 1220 Dean Street in the Crown Heights North Historic District. This is a Neo-Grec-style rowhouse designed by William Roofs and built circa 1877, and the application is to construct a rooftop bulkhead and modify openings at the rear facade.
Good morning Commissioners, Dana Littlewitz, Preservation Staff. The item before you today, item before you today is to construct a rooftop bulkhead and railings and enlarge window openings at the first floor of the rear facade. The property is located on the south side of Dean Street between Nostrand Avenue and New York Avenue in the Crown Heights North Historic District. between Nostrand Avenue and New York Avenue in the Crown Heights North Historic District. Photos here show the historic and existing, existing photos of the building. You can see the rear facade at the top right. The proposed work will be visible only through the community garden to the southwest of the building, which you can see on the visibility study here. Please note that the initial mock-up shown in photos five through eight did not include the guardrail, but the revised mock-up with the guardrail is shown later in the presentation. And the photo montages with the proposed work are shown on the bottom left. Here are existing and proposed side-by-side photos. And the same from a different view. Please note that the deck and alterations to openings at the basement level, seen here on the right, are being handled at staff level due to lack of visibility from a public thoroughfare. Here are floor plans showing the changes proposed at the basement and first floor. And here you can see the roof plan at the top right showing the bulkhead. So you can see here on the far right, the proposed work is to combine and enlarge the two window openings at the first floor and install a single-leaf aluminum-frame glass door and three single-light casement windows surmounted by a four-light transom. At the roof, a light gray stucco-finished stair bulkhead and simple black metal guardrail are proposed. Here's a section showing the proposed eight-foot-tall bulkhead. And here are existing versus proposed sections in a visibility study. A pedestal paver decking system is part of the current proposal, but the HVAC units shown here were previously approved at staff level. And here are, here are photo montages again. And here's the revised mock-up showing the guardrail. The left is from within the community garden and the middle and right are from the public right-of-way. And the applicant has also prepared a survey of row houses with roof bulkheads within the historic district for comparison. Thank you, and the applicant is available to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Do we have any questions Commissioners? No questions at this time, so we're going to check testimony and we'll come back to you. And I'll note that there is no one in the hearing room to speak on this item, so I will turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote participants.
Those joining us via Zoom who would like to offer testimony, please use the raise hand function. Seeing none, I'll note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board Eight recommends approval.
All right, so there's no testimony except the community board which supports it, but I'd like to invite you up to make any final statement you'd like to make before we... Oh.
Let me double-check.
We'll double-check that.
My name is Ron Copels. I represent the owner on this. Again, there's, there is some visibility, I can't deny that. Obviously, if there was a street wall on Bergen Street, there'd be no visibility at all of this. The greatest visibility is obviously in the winter months, lack of foliage. During the summer months, from the street itself is very, very limited visibility, although in the garden itself, it is partially visible. The basement is not, there's a partial first floor that is somewhat visible. And this was an existing one-over-one window throughout there. I do not see any great historic value in the rear facade. We kept it at the upper levels because it just would have been overly visible up there.
Commissioner Jefferson?
You did something here that I have not seen before. In your rear yard, you divided it into two pieces. You have an existing backyard and then you have a green wall.
That was...
How do you decide on that, design-wise?
There is limited, well, we have a 30-foot rear yard which is existing. It's currently 52 inches, 52 feet, I believe, properly. The little green wall is to allow the basement level to have some outdoor space and some privacy within it. It's at the 30-foot line so that it maintains a full rear yard.
I thought it was a very interesting design.
Just gives them a little bit of private space.
I can add more context on the...
Sorry, go ahead Stephen.
Okay. So, sorry, that was mixed with another resolution. So the community board disapproves of the casement windows at the rear, the rooftop bulkhead, condensers, and railing that are all visible from Bergen Street as they're out of context with the historic district. The board, however, does support the Dean Street facade changes.
Okay. And I think, yeah, you know, you explained the visibility that really seemed to be what the community board is objecting to for these components. Any other final questions? Okay, so we'll begin our discussion then. Commissioner Master, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so this is an application to construct a rooftop bulkhead and railings and to modify openings at the rear facade. And the rooftop bulkhead is not visible over the front facade, but there are some longer views. And, and then the double opening, combined opening at the parlor floor of the rear facade will be partially visible through this community garden and somewhat seasonally as well. So we'll begin our discussion Commissioner Goldblum, would you start this one?
Sure. I think it's appropriate. I think that the bulkhead is minimal. There's other bulkheads in the district. openings all wrapped up, they will need a coping. I thought that was staff level.
No, it's the, at the parlor level, that opening is visible and requires your view. It's the basement level below.
Very typical of the kind of thing we have seen.
I agree with Commissioner Goldblum in appropriate.
Same here, but I also want to commend the applicant for being so honest.
Regarding 1220 Dean Street in the Crown Heights North Historic District, the application is to construct rooftop bulkhead and modify openings at the rear facade. I note the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of Crown Heights North Historic District. I recommend approval. Finding that the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features, that the proposed rooftop bulkhead and railings, modified masonry openings will not be visible over the front facade and will only be visible from a public thoroughfare, from limited vantage points and at a distance across community garden within the context of secondary facades. That the design and materiality of the rooftop bulkhead featuring sloped roof with gray stucco finish will be in keeping with the character of utilitarian rooftop accretions found at other buildings throughout the historic district, that the railings will be simply designed and will not call undue attention to themselves at the multi-light window and door assembly at the combined openings will be in keeping with the scale and character of secondary facades found at row houses within the block, and that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the building or the historic district.
Commissioner Ginsburg, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right, Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Chen?
Aye.
Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum? Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Luthfi? Commissioner Master?
Aye.
Seven in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
All right, that's approved, thank you. And we'll move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number six, LPC 25-09894, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 144, lot 13, 157 Duane Street in the Tribeca West Historic District. This is an Italianate-style store and loft building built in 1856 to 57. The application is to legalize the installation of an awning without LPC permits.
Good morning Commissioners, Michelle Creran, Preservation Staff. This application is to legalize installation of an awning, installed without permits at 157 Duane Street. So the, these are the previous and existing conditions of the building. The building is located on the north side of Duane Street, between Hudson Street and West Broadway in the Tribeca West Historic District. And here are some photos showing the storefront with the awning installed, which spans two separate bays at the building. On the left here is a photo showing the building in the 1940s. The existing pedimented building entrance can be seen in this photo, whereas the storefront infill has since been replaced. The existing infill was installed prior to the designation of the historic district and features wood panels at the locations where transom windows would typically be located. The awning was installed at the nonhistoric wood infill and did not create any new penetrations at the historic cast iron piers. These are some examples given by the business owner of awnings nearby. However, note that the two in this photo, or at least the one at Zona Tribeca, does not appear to be legal based on commission records. However, these two examples also in Tribeca West are legal awning installations in the district. The business owner is here and can't answer any questions you have and provide further context.
Hi, I am the owner of Casa Restaurant. My name is Ju Pira, last name Lee, L-E-E. Yeah, so there was a little bit of a confusion in the beginning. We were supposed to, we were trying to get two awnings on the facade of the restaurant. And so the plural was two awnings. And so where you see that locksmith sticker, very attractive one. I was, we were going to put a small awning there, but then we, when we heard, when we were talking to Michelle, we kind of thought that we were not allowed, so we just put that one there. But what she meant was where you see the cast iron column in the middle, we were supposed to make a small awning and then let the cast iron show in entirety and then put another small one in between those two cast irons. So, but we did not perforated the cast iron, it's all in the wood, you know. It was a little mistake. Sorry.
Any questions?
Off to the topic, why a Brazilian flag in the window?
I was born, I was born in Brazil.
Oh, congratulations.
If I keep talking, you're going to hear me.
Okay.
I have an accent.
I went to school in Brazil.
Are you there? Do you speak Portuguese?
Used to.
It's a hard language. You either speak when you're a child or very hard grammar.
Okay, all right. If there are no other questions, we'll move to testimony and then we'll come back to you. And I'll note that there is no one in the hearing room to speak on this item, so I'll turn it over to Stephen to take us through any remote participants.
Anyone joining us via Zoom who wishes to offer testimony, please use the raise hand function. Our first speaker will be Kaylee Johnson.
Hello Commissioners, Kaylee Johnson with the Historic District's Council. HDC finds this legalization to be inappropriate. Tribeca West Historic District is known for its exposed cast iron architectural elements and we believe these elements should remain unobscured. Currently, the awning spans across two openings and disrupts the woodwork and cast iron elements beneath it. We believe it would be more appropriate for the awning to be divided into two sections and should be moved vertically to align with some prominent horizontal feature of the facade. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Christina Conroy.
Good morning Commissioners, I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society, New York. Now, the Victorian Society does not support legalization of this awning installation. One of the distinctive things about 157 Duane Street is that it's one of a pair of buildings. The designation report states that, quote, "In the center of the block, numbers 157 and 159 are five-story Italianate structures based in brownstone above cast iron bases. These stores and loft buildings are a remarkably unified pair. We believe that any change which diminishes this unity detracts from these two buildings, from the streetscape, and also from the district. The illegally installed awning is unacceptable, unacceptable for several reasons. It bridges over adjacent windows with no regard for the original forebay pattern which runs the full height of both buildings. It conceals sections of the historic cast iron pilasters set between the bays and other features shared by both buildings. And it was installed in the center of the historic transom frames, which are common to both 157 and 159. When the tax photo was taken, both buildings had..."
Sorry, Ms. Conroy, you're frozen.
...glass, painted glass or steel panels at 157, but until the illegal installation of this awning, the relationship was visible. Now it's concealed by this awkwardly placed awning. We find it disturbing when a pair of matching buildings retain so much historic material to see a proposal to legalize an installation done without any regard for that material. We strongly recommend denial of this application. Thank you Commissioners.
Anyone else joining us via Zoom who wishes to speak, please use the raise hand function. Seeing none, I will note for the record that Manhattan Community Board One recommends approval.
Okay, thank you. Would you like to respond to any of the comments we've heard?
Yeah, I mean, I see what she's saying, but really, the only piece that discovering is, you know, what it was supposed to be, two small awnings. I mean, when we went to the public hearing and the community board, number one, they really thought that it wasn't a problem, you know. It was a very, it's just the middle one, the discovering, it's just the top part.
Okay. Yes, Commissioner Ginsburg?
So, and I may not have fully understood, why didn't you do two smaller awnings?
Because we understood that, since we were going to do another awning on that side, where the locksmith sticker is, we understood that we had to do one awning only and not two. So we didn't do the second one and we did that one because, what is it called, the little thing? Yeah, we just didn't understand it. You know, Michelle said make two awnings, right? Instead of one or something like that. It's the, what's the name of the little thing that we, that we didn't?
The cast iron column?
No.
Pediment.
Oh.
Above the door.
What is it called? No, 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 no. It's the column thing.
Oh, that's...
Yeah, yeah, we just didn't think, we didn't think, since we were not touching the cast iron, we just didn't think that it was, you know.
They misunderstood the directions.
But when we saw, when we went to the public hearing, community board, we heard them. They really, and they even put a comment, it's like, we don't really see a problem. Just the small column, you know, the middle columns.
All right, so let's begin our discussion. Commissioner Jefferson, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you Commissioner Goldblum, would you second that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so this is an application to legalize an awning that was stalled, installed without permits, or in non-compliance with direction from us. And the direction, I think, as we understand it, was to install two awnings and that would have made it eligible for a staff-level approval. So it's shape and its slope and the open sides and the loose skirt all meet the requirements for a staff-level approval, but the location and installation doesn't. And that, so Michelle was directing them to a staff-level approval to do two awnings and not span the pier, the cast iron pier. So there was a misunderstanding and a second awning was eliminated and they installed this awning over, it does span over the pier. So there was a misunderstanding and a second awning was eliminated and they installed this awning over, it does span over the pier. I think some things that we can think about are that it didn't, it didn't attach to the cast iron. It's attached to modern storefront infill. And then I think as you look at the architecture, there are the primary pilasters or piers on the ends and the interior ones are thinner and secondary. So that may be another way to read the architecture of this building and think about the appropriateness of this. And thirdly, I would just say that the commission has in the past approved awnings that do span secondary cast iron pilasters, even when not eligible for a staff approval. Commissioner Master, would you like to start this one?
Sure. I think the fact that we have an awning here is appropriate because we had previously, staff had approved like two separate awnings. I think the single awning is fine. I think you can still see the cast iron pier. I, you know, I think it looks fine, as the community board said. The only suggestion I might make is that there's some metal that's showing if they can possibly paint it white so that it blends in perfectly. I think that would be appropriate.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
I agree with my fellow commissioner.
All right. Commissioner Goldblum? Commissioner Ginsburg?
Agreed.
Commissioner Chen?
The right color.
Yeah. Commissioner Lutfi? Okay, all right. Commissioner Master, would you make that motion?
In the matter of LPC-25-09894, 157 Duane Street, Tribeca West Historic District. An Italianate-style store and loft building built in 1856-57. Application is to legalize installation of an awning without LPC permits. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Tribeca West Historic District. I recommend approval with modifications. Finding that the awning was installed at modern wood storefront infill below the cast iron capitals. Therefore, the work did not damage or conceal any significant architectural features. That the retractable awning is clad in water repellent canvas material with a neutral matte finish that harmonizes with the building's color palette. That the overall amount of signage is not excessive and that the work is reversible in nature. I recommend that a portion of the awning framing attachment, oh wait. I recommend that the unfinished framing be painted white to match the storefront infill.
Thank you. Commissioner Lutfi, would you second that motion? Mark, will you call the vote?
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum? Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi? Commissioner Master?
Aye.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the motion passed.
All right, that's approved. Thank you. And we'll move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number seven, LPC 25-08326. Application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, Block 530, Lot 66, For Bond Street in the NoHo Historic District. This is a federal Italianate-style residential structure built in 1828 to 1829. And the application is to alter the commercial base, paint facade elements, and install signage.
Hello Commissioners, I'm Alexander Stoltz, Principal of SADA Architecture. Like to present our proposal for For Bond Street. A brief introduction to our project. Our proposal is to make modifications to the mezzanine level of a previously altered historic rowhouse, as well as other restorative work to the general facade. At left, is a photo of the existing building. At right, an image of our proposed alteration as we will get into. And please note that our building owner is also here in attendance with us. She's available to answer any questions. Her family has owned the building for several generations. And this is a introduction to the NoHo Historic District and the location of our building within the district. A view of the north side of Bond Street, showing our property in the middle on the left, and the two immediately adjoining adjacent buildings. This row of party wall buildings were all constructed in the early 1800s and later had their lowest two levels, heavily modified prior to the district's designation in 1990s. And each building has their own unique way of handling this alteration and infill. A current view of To Bond Street to the left, this is west of our building. Originally erected as a residence, the first and second floors were later modified for commercial use by installing iron columns, pediments, and large show windows. For commercial use. To the east, directly east, is a current view on the left of, to the right of our building with scaffolding, but on the right is without scaffolding. Also erected originally as a residence, the basement and first floors were later modified for commercial use by installing a span of divided show lights and doors at each level. Further context, the current view of For Bond to the right of our building, sorry, additional street context, including an expanded view of the north side of Bond Street, where you can see the three buildings together and the adjacent buildings to them, and a view of the south side of Bond Street. Across the street, the majority of the remaining streetscape on this block is a larger building. Two tax law photos from different sides of our building and the neighbors showing the altered state to the lowest levels of the building at this time. Just note at the time of these photos were taken, it's likely that For Bond did not contain a mezzanine, which it now illegally has. This makes the exact reestablishment of the old storefront design not feasible. At right, a view of the building from the designation photo in the 1990s. And at left, a current view of the building. Note that some minor work has been recently done to the mezzanine and first floor facade under separate landmarks dockets. A close-up view of the current condition on the right. The first floor mezzanine, as well as a description of the scope of work, which requires a public hearing review. Just to clarify, the brownstone window lintels are being restored to match the adjacent building. That can be done at the staff level. The color is what we are here for today, for lintels on the upper floor. The items will be the logo at the left of the building, remove the mezzanine windows and cemented facade. Done. And painting the brick is also a public hearing issue. 2D elevation drawing of the existing building and its neighbors. Our proposed elevation drawing of the proposed design. We propose to redo, to redo the infill at the mezzanine level with a band of aluminum windows flanked at the top by an arched decorative metal panel and at the bottom by a larger metal panel with edge detailing. We believe this work will allow for this already altered building to fit in better with the streetscape of the historic district. Other work will include facade repainting, alterations to the firescape at the staff level, and reintroduction of the decorative window pediments, which I mentioned. This will be, this is staff level, but again, the paint is a issue. This is an enlarged, enlarged view of the proposed design. Which we can come back to. An elevation view with the added color that we are proposing, as well as some technical drawings for the details for the metal panel. The proposed stucco window pediments to match the detailing present at the adjoining building. The building originally had decorative pediments similar to this, so this work is largely restorative and again, can be done at the staff level. But the paint again is the landmark's public hearing issue. Details on the proposed signage. Please note that the logo, the signage, is a family heirloom of the owners and will be repainted approximately 75% of its original size. It has a sentimental value and also historic value, we believe. The spoken wheel design will be repainted to match the size and coloring approved under a previous landmarks application. Technical drawings showing the existing steel. None of that is, none of the structure is going to be altered. This is all infill. Proposed. Precedent for the, for our design from the surrounding neighborhood, trying to illustrate the second floor infill in both proportion, materiality, and detailing ornament. Just a note that Bowery is not within our historic district, but it is very close, as you can see in the location map above. That's the end of the presentation, and I could take it back to the...
Right. Okay, I think this is fine where we are now, and, well, I... Okay. Commissioners, do we have any questions on this? Yes, Commissioner Jefferson?
On the right-hand side, there's a vertical line. What is that?
Well, that's a cast iron column. That's why this is not agreed. Can I take this back to?
Yes.
Are you talking about the firescape, by the way? No. The firescape is going to be redone, basically, on...
No, go back, go back.
Not to the large, wait, I just wanna, yeah.
Yeah, that line there.
There should be a point around.
Standing in the right, above the second one, the line sticking down.
Yeah.
Firescape.
The firescape?
Firescape.
Banner sign.
Oh, there's a flagpole. Yes, there's an existing flagpole.
Yeah, it's not a firescape.
It's a flagpole.
It's a flagpole.
Yeah, it's a blade, it's a blade design. It's already there.
Oh.
Yeah, that's not before us.
There are two of them. There's one on the left, too.
There are two.
Yeah, so, but we're looking at the changes to the base of the building to create the sort of two-story storefront and painting the black, the signage on the sign band, and then the black painted or the restored lintels above the upper floor windows. Yes, Commissioner Goldblum?
Can I ask you a question about how you came to the design of the mezzanine visions? Why are there seven windows as opposed to six or eight? And what dictated that proportion?
I would say that that was a matter of proportions what felt right. I wouldn't say that we're, the precedents are mostly double hungs and these are going to be casement windows. But this, to us, it responded to the size of the windows above. Not exactly, but it just, it seemed to work for us.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions? All right, we're gonna move to public testimony and we'll come back to you. And I'll note that there is no one in the hearing room to speak on this item, so we'll turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote participants.
Those joining us via Zoom who wish to testify, please use the raise hand function, after which you will be promoted to panelists. We ask you to unmute yourselves, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. Our first speaker is Richard Moses.
Good afternoon Commissioners, I'm Richard Moses with the Lower East Side Preservation Initiative. Lower East Side Preservation Initiative, also known as LESBI, is not opposed to most of the proposed work, which does not appear to damage or destroy the building's historic features. However, we find that the design of the second-story window bank, that for the design of the second-story window bank, the applicant should work with the staff so those proportions and details better harmonize with the building's historic architecture, either by using a traditionally-based vocabulary or, what is often more challenging, a more contemporary aesthetic. In this way, the design will better recall Ray's storefronts that in the decades around the turn of the 20th century were commonly installed in earlier residential buildings. We don't have a problem with the, with the black paint, but I do have to say that, you know, we would prefer if the lintel design did not mimic the, the design of the neighboring lintels, but instead we're a simplified version of them so that people don't get confused on the history of the building. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker will be Kaylee Johnson.
Hello Commissioners, Kaylee Johnson with the Historic District Council. HGC finds this proposal to be moving in the right direction. Meaningful investment is clearly going into this facade, but we believe the applicant should explore how to get the proportions and design to work better to create a clearer overall composition. The lettering on the sign band could be larger, the oval and rectangular shaped signs existing together are disharmonious, and the display window openings appear to be too tall. We believe that the 1940s facade photo of Six Bond Street offers the applicant the correct precedent for restoring the storefront. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Christina Conroy.
Good afternoon Commissioners, I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society. Now, the Victorian Society supports the installations of the new lintels above the double-hung windows on the top three floors. These would match the design of the lintels visible in the tax photo of this building. However, we recommend the use of cast stone for the lintels instead of the proposed painted stucco. The work at the second floor would include removing sections of the stucco-clad masonry to create a large window opening at this floor with seven black-finished operable casement windows set into this opening. The applicant has provided pictures of several historic buildings which have large, divided display windows in this location. However, this new window opening is too tall and is uncomfortably close to the ends of the historic shallow brick arch just above the new band of windows. The slim pilasters and brick arch are so attenuated that they do not appear to have enough material to support the upper three floors. In fact, the drawing on slide 11 shows a dashed line through the new windows indicating the bottom of what appears to be the existing structural arch. The windows should be shorter with a visually stronger lintel above the new opening. Finally, the oval shape and rectangular shapes of the two signs proposed have no unity. They are distracting. They are on a sign band that seems excessively high in relation to the height of the storefront. These problems of proportion and design should be addressed before approval. Thank you Commissioners.
Thank you. Anyone else joining us via Zoom who wishes to speak, please use the raise hand function. All right, seeing none, I will note for the record that Manhattan Community Board One recommends approval.
Comments that we've heard?
I don't have any comments.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, any final questions? Yes, Commissioner Chen?
I'm kind of intrigued by Commissioner Goldblum's question and then the LESBI's in the testimony and the suggestion. Are there anything that anyone deemed that this could be improved upon? This current design?
You're asking us?
Yes.
I mean, we, we think that this is appropriate. I don't, I don't see any... I don't, I don't see any need to improve it, or we would have proposed.
Okay. All right, okay, so let's make a motion to close the hearing and begin our discussion. Commissioner Chen, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So move.
Thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, all right, so this is, this was actually once an early residential structure, has been altered, I think, several times to relate to the commercial character that, of the NoHo Historic District that developed around it. And, and then since then, stripped of some of its details and altered at the base. And so this is a proposal to reimagine the base, and the applicant looked at some other examples in the neighborhood to do this sort of two-story expression. It includes signage on the sign band and, and then at the upper floors where they're restoring the lintels, we're looking at the proposed black color. And I think the applicant has shown some black-finished lintels on this building or others. Commissioner Lutfi, would you like to start this one?
For the most part, I think that this is working. I mean, one of the goals is to better unify the base. And I think that this is a step in the right direction. They, and they're really cleaning it up, and I do like the fact that they're, they want to do a band of uniform windows. I, I do think it would make sense to work with the staff on the proportions of those windows because they seem like they're just a little out of scale. Maybe the, you know, maybe the, the numbers, we have less of them, maybe they're a little shorter. And I don't think that that would hurt, hurt the design at all. It looks like, from a signage perspective, that they are literally using the logo of the contracting company, and it's like very different from the other sign, the other, you know, spoken wheel. So it, it looks, does, I, I don't know if anything can be done about that, but they don't sit that nicely together. And I don't know, I would work with staff on that as well. And I'm okay with the work on the lintels.
Commissioner Mastor?
I like the overall design. I think it's a big improvement from what was there before. I like how they opened up the mezzanine and put the windows. I actually think that it looks balanced to me. You know, if they want to work with the staff in terms of proportion on the sign band, you know, that's fine, but I can find this appropriate.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Yeah, I find the, I find it interesting that the, the, the arch itself is just graphic. It has nothing to do with support and all that. I think the window sizes are nice. The only issue I have with it is the oval. I think the oval sign should be smaller to fit within the space that they have there. I think the, the lintels are a good touch. I don't like the materiality of it, but it's a good, good.
Thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
Thanks. I think the lintels are fine, as long as the staff. I think that the color of the paint in general is fine. I agree that the oval is probably a little bit too big. I, I think what I would add to that, to those comments is, if you look at how friezes are normally done, they usually don't have anything on the top, a really wide, flat thing, and then a skinny thing on the bottom. There's usually some, some sense of balance there, proportion. I'm sure staff can work with them on that. That can work in concert with the reduction oval to kind of just make it feel a little out of the hardware store box. I think that the, my biggest concern has to do with the casement windows on the mezzanine level. I think that the appearance of seven in a row with similar pillars in between kind of doesn't respond to the rhythm and scale that the applicant showed in his air. Typically, those kind of window arrangements have a major-minor quality to them. There's a, there's a kind of larger division. Here, it just looks kind of like, you know, they gave the hole to the Anderson rep, and he, he put in. I, I think that there should be a rhythm to it. And I think that one place to look is the, is the build, is the building above, right? It's divided into three bays, right, three window bays. So you could have pillars that are centered on, on that. You could use the arched element as a, as a way to do it, where the center, the center window does have a relationship to the decorative paneling of the arch above. But then you kind of vary it, you know? You have a, you have a larger pier and a smaller pier or something. I think, I just think it looks a little bit out of the catalog, and I think that the applicants could work with staff on that. It could be muttons that are added. I mean, there's a million ways to do it, and I don't think it's our place to design it for them, but I think that the, the idea of, of a fenestrated mezzanine is great. I just think it needs a little bit of TLC.
Okay. Commissioner Ginsburg?
In, in general, I agree, this is a big improvement. I think the oval sign should be somewhat smaller and working with staff. And I can probably accept the second-floor fenestration as is, but I'd work with staff because I think it's possible that it could be made better. And while it's still just a drawing, that's the time to do that.
Okay. Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I'm, I'm in agreement. I think in general that the fact that the, the original, the oval sign was already huge, and then that they brought it down a little bit, but I think that some of the Commissioners' comments are, are well, well taken. And, and, yeah, so I have no problem with the, with the lintel. And then I think is, if they can work with the staff, that'll be great.
Okay, all right, great. So I think we can make a motion to approve this with the modification that they continue to work with the staff to study the proportion and rhythm of the mezzanine windows and the, and to reduce the oval sign to have a better relationship between the two signs.
Okay. In the matter of docket, 25-08326, 4 Bond Street, NoHo Historic District, a federal side, a federal Italianate-style residential structure built in 1828 to 29. The application is to alter the commercial base, paint the facade, paint facade elements and install signage. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the NoHo Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features, that the proposed infill featuring a metal sign band above the existing ground floor infill to remain, and a new band of windows and decorative metal panel above will form a unified composition which is consistent with the character of early 20th-century commercial bases at buildings found within the historic district, that the proposed band of windows will be in keeping with tall transoms and second-floor infill found at commercial bases of other buildings in the historic district in terms of placement proportions, material configuration, and details, that the design and details of the proposed metal work will be well-scaled to the facade and in keeping with the types of ornamentation historically found at buildings of this style and age, that the proposed black-painted finish of the infill and the cast iron columns will be consistent with finishes commonly found at commercial buildings within this historic district, that the proposed painted signage at the new sign band will be well-scaled to the building and typical in terms of placement and type, that the cumulative effect of the amount and size of the proposed signage, along with the existing flagpole and bracket sign will not overwhelm the building or its streetscape, that the proposed black painted finish at the upper floor window lintels and sills will be compatible with the color palette at the remainder of the facade and the surrounding streetscape, which includes a neighboring building with similar color scheme, and that the work will not detract from the special architectural or historic character of the building or the historic district. I recommend that the applicant continue to work with staff to study the proportions and windows in the, the upper windows in the lower portion of, of the building and to reduce the oval sign so that its proportions work better with the other signage in the sign band.
All right, Commissioner Mastor, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right, Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carol?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Mr. Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum? Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
Commissioner Mastor?
Aye.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
All right, so that's approved, and please continue to work with the staff on those details. Okay, so we're going to break for lunch now, Commissioners, and we will return at 12:50. So we'll ask everyone on the Zoom meeting who wishes to return after lunch to voluntarily exit the meeting at this time so that you don't have any technical difficulties that might arise if we remove you. And we'll see everybody at 12:50. Thank you.